Half a day, the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning is calling this virtual public hearing to order. It is now 2:11 PM, Wednesday, July 14, 2021. Notice that this afternoon's virtual hearing is provided via email to senators, stakeholders and local media on July 7, 2021 for the five-day notice and July 12 for the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of open government law. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleague Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you for being here today. The purpose of this virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on message and communications 36GL-21-0595, Guam Environmental Protection Agency, that transmits to Ilas Latur in Guahan of the proposed rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law. Now, the rules of conduct for this hearing are as follows. The host of this hearing will mute all participants until called upon. The virtual background should not be utilized and participants' faces must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you're speaking into the microphone. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair. After testimonies provided, senators will have the opportunity to pose questions to the agency. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the agenda. So now to begin public hearing for the Guam EPA's transmittal to Ilas Latur in Guahan of proposed rules and regulations pursuant to the Guam Administrative Adjudication Law for the underground storage tank rules and regulations. So the purpose of this public hearing is to ensure that the underground storage tank rules and regs, as promulgated by Guam EPA and transmitted to the 36 Guam Legislature on May 19, 2021, completes the administrative adjudication process, commonly known as the AAA process. The promulgation of rules and regs through this rigorous AAA process involves public hearings by the agency, a review by DOA, approval by the Guam EPA Board, review by the Office of the Attorney General, and approval by Imaga Hagen Guahan prior to its submission to Ilas Latur in Guahan. According to 5GCA Section 9303(c), no rule shall become effective until after 90 calendar days have elapsed from the date of filing with the Speaker of Ilas Latur in Guahan. Previously, these rules and regs were submitted to the 35th Guam Legislature pursuant to the administrative adjudication law on October 27, 2020, which subsequently received a public hearing. However, the filing date was insufficient for 90 days to have elapsed prior to the end of term. And since one legislature cannot bind another, the legislative process would have to be repeated upon re-submission to the 36 Guam Legislature. These are the very same rules and regs that were submitted to the 36 Guam Legislature. However, it was submitted with a new determination from Guam EPA that the rules were already in effect based on a different section of the law, 10GCA Sections 45105 and 45106, that requires 45 days to have elapsed, unlike the 90 days through the AAA process. Due to these ambiguities that exist in law, it is my intent to ensure both areas are addressed in thinking about the long-term effect of these regulations and to also send these rules and regulations for codification after 90 days have elapsed from the time of its submission to the 36 Guam Legislature. I should note that upon receipt of these rules and regs, it could be heard as-is or adopted through a bill. So initially, these rules and regs were adopted under Bill 149-36, which also received a public hearing. After that hearing, I determined that the risk of non-passage was probable, and as a steward of these rules and regs, I decided to proceed with the alternate route of hearing these rules and regs as-is, which removes that risk and which brings us here today. So again, these rules and regs would enable Title 10, Chapter 76, Article 1, underground storage of regulated items. And the rules and regs being presented to the committee today have been developed through the AAA process as spoken before. They were approved by US EPA Office of Underground Storage Tanks, the US EPA Region 9. It was publicly heard by EPA. With no significant comments or questions, it was adopted by Guam EPA Board of Directors by Resolution 19-002. It is approved by the Attorney General of Guam. It was approved by the Governor of Guam and is now before the legislature today. The underground storage tank program was established and codified under Chapter 76, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, in 1989. This is the first of its existence, which is an important regulatory achievement with input and guidance from US EPA as part of RICROI that was developed nationally in response to spills of petroleum into the environment. And these rules and regs are required by Chapter 76, which states, "One of the purposes is to enact and establish regulations, guidelines, standards and policies that ensure consistent cleanup of regulated substances and mitigation of the damage they cause." By adopting these rules, it would ensure Guam rules are as stringent as the federal This will affect primary owners on private, government, federal and commercial properties. Currently, there are 282 permitted underground storage tanks, some above our northern Guam lands aquifer. The regulations, should they be adopted, will include greater measures to approve designs, leakage, construction, operation of underground storage tanks, ensure containment to prevent leakage into our precious northern Guam lands aquifer. It would authorize cleanups and fines and create a process for abandoned underground storage tanks. Guam EPA will use these rules and regulations as an enforcement tool to prevent the release of regulated items into the ground, which will affect our water resources and the surrounding environment. The underground storage tank rules and regs monitor everything from design, construction, installation, training, permits, operating, detection, response, actions, enforcement. I would like to now invite Guam EPA to present their summary or a brief summary of their rules and regs. So, Mivani, you're welcome to present.
Half a day. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Senators and everyone else in attendance today. I'm Mivani Hasita and I am the Environmental Health Specialist for our Hazardous Waste Management Program here at Guam EPA. So I'll be the one presenting our UST rules and regulations. Okay, so we have here the Guam UST regulations. It's comprised of 13 articles. We have Article 1 from the scope and installation requirements up to Article 13 for enforcement. So we are trying to hopefully accomplish state program approval for our UST regulations. So currently, Guam is not a SPA state. That's the state program approval. Therefore, owners and operators of USTs must comply with both Guam and EPA's UST requirements. SPA approval will result with compliance with state program only. And Guam EPA's proposed UST regulations has been reviewed by Ms. Elizabeth McDermott of the Regulation Development and State Program Approval from US EPA's House Program. That's the Office of the Underground Storage Tanks. Next slide, please. So Article 1, this covers the applicability to the UST systems and our definitions. Next slide. Here is a picture of the most common UST system. You can see in the bottom of the picture, you can have a view of how the underground storage tank looks at a common area such as our gas station. Next slide, please. Other UST systems are composed of the emergency generator tanks. We also have airport hydrant fuel distribution systems. We have field constructed UST systems and flow-through tank systems. That's also known as the OWAS or the Oil-Water Separators. Next slide, please. Article 2, this covers tanks and piping. We have installer certification, under dispenser containment and upgrades. Next slide. Here are photos of underground storage tanks before they are installed and placed underground. Some are steel and some are fiberglass made. Next slide. We have photos of piping. It's required to have double-wall piping. Next slide. Secondary containment. So new or replaced tanks and piping must have secondary containment. So this photo shows how we have the primary wall of the tank and then the secondary wall of the underground storage tank exposed. Next slide. Under dispenser containment, each new dispenser must have under dispenser containment, also known as UDC. UDC must be liquid-tight and allow for visual inspection or be continuously monitored for leaks. Next slide. So Article 3, this covers spill and overfill control. We have notification, reporting and record-keeping, and UST systems testing and inspections. Next slide. Okay, this one on UST inspection tools, there are some challenges. These are photos of what we go through if we head out for a field inspection. Next slide, please. Okay, spill prevention equipment. On the left side, you have how a spill bucket looks when a fuel delivery truck comes in and dispenses fuel. On the right side, we have a submersible pit. Next slide. Overfill prevention equipment. It must be periodically tested and flow restrictors in vent lines, also known as ball floats, are no longer allowed in new or replaced UST systems. Next slide. So Article 4, this covers methods of release detection for tanks and piping, release detection, also known as RD. There's RD record-keeping and testing of release detection equipment. Next slide. So Article 5, this covers on reporting suspected releases, investigating releases and cleanup of spill and overfill. Here you'll see an example of automatic tank gauge system on the bottom right that's used to monitor for, for example, leaks from the underground storage tank. Next slide. Article 6, this covers release response action. So following verbal notification of suspected release, owners or operators must follow up with a written notice within three business days. There is corrective action and notification. Next slide. Article 7, this covers temporary closure for underground storage tanks, permanent closures and site assessment. Next slide. Closure and change in service. Temporary closure requirements, three months up to 12 months, and the permanent closure, it's completely removed from the ground. Next slide, please. So Article 8, this is on financial responsibility. It describes the definition of the terms and demonstrates financial responsibility for taking corrective action or compensation. Next slide. Article 9 is on lender liability. It describes about the ownership of the underground storage tank systems and the liability and management of UST systems. Next slide. Article 10 is on operator training. There are three classes of operators. There's Class A, Class B and Class C. The training is required and retraining is provided. And in these classes, you learn about documentation. Next slide. So Article 12 is on permits and variances. UST required permits, too. So there are permits for installation, to operate, to modify, to close and to change in ownership or operator. There is a permit fee and there are permit conditions. Next slide. So Article 13, this is the last article regarding enforcement. There's a purpose. There's a field citation and delivery, deposit and acceptance prohibition. Next slide. So field citations, these are photos, examples of when we do issue field citations, someone involved expedited settlement on UST violations found during inspections at the facility. Next slide. This is on the federal implementation time PA. It gives their timeframes with the dates and the month and the day of when to meet these timeframes. Next slide. And that concludes our presentations.
That's to do with Masi, Ms. Hasita for the presentation. So I would like to also recognize Senators Teletightigui and Senator Tonyada. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I guess some questions regarding the rules and regs. So it was reviewed by US EPA and I understand that, was there a lot of training involved in making sure that EPA's can handle the program?
What do you mean by training?
So, being that this is a, these are new rules and regs, is there any additional training or resources that Guam EPA needs to carry out the program?
As far as the agency or the personnel in hazardous waste management, there's no additional training needed because these are rules that were already incorporated or are federal rules that we were following before. So when we committed to doing our regulations, we practically mirrored the federal requirements.
Okay, great. So what this would do, once it's codified, then the UST, I guess entities, those entities that have underground storage tanks, they would just have to basically answer to Guam PA and not both entities? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, great. And so there are 282 underground storage tanks. Is that, is that number still correct from what I heard?
Yeah, right. Yes, I do believe it's currently yes.
Okay. And so basically, so what is the, I guess, the cycle of monitoring for these underground storage tank owners?
Based on their ATG, it's, I believe it's every 30 days, but with their automatic tank gates, it continuously monitors the system every single day.
24/7.
So 24/7.
Okay. And so do you guys get that real-time information or how quickly do you get that information?
We get that information when we do go out and conduct field inspections. So we review the records for the past 12 months.
Okay. And so I guess how often do you go out to do those inspections?
By the requirements of the federal regs, we have to go and inspect facilities every three years. We have to meet, I believe, either 50 or 60 facilities per three-year cycle. So every year, we would go out on a quarterly basis and do maybe six to 10 per year, or we would take the 50 or 52 that are required and we would divide it by four quarters.
Okay, so yeah, for every three years, you would have to somehow cycle them, cycle through them.
Yes.
Are there currently some underground storage tank owners that do not have the double-containment system?
I believe there is only one facility currently that is a single-wall tank, and I believe that is the Sand Castle. But they do have the automatic tank gates monitoring system.
Does that contain oil? What kind of hazardous?
Diesel fuel.
Okay. Is there, I guess, are they planning to upgrade or what is the requirement for them to upgrade to?
Per the federal regs, and I believe it's also in our current regulations, we go by the manufacturer's recommended requirement, and I believe it's at a 30 or 40 years where you would have to replace the tank.
Okay. So this bill, sorry, these rules and regs, would it should apply, or how would it apply to the single, that particular underground storage tank?
So based on our record review with the facility, we will look at the day that the tank was manufactured and put into the ground, and then we'll factor in either the 30 or 40. I forgot which part is it, but I believe it's 30 years. So we look at that and if they're approaching less than a year or less than two years, two years, we will recommend that they look into replacing it before that 30-year timeframe comes up.
Yeah, so do you monitor them more frequently because they don't follow, I guess, the current requirements?
No, because as, as, when the, when the new regs were promulgated by the feds, the only time that you would require double-wall containment or double-wall to a tank is when you pull it out. But back to the manufacturer's recommendation, if you're already approaching the 30 years, then you have no choice but to remove it.
So Senator, basically, the single-wall tank, it still exists, is kind of, for lack of a better word, grandfathered in.
All right, Walter, can you just, I know we can hear you clearly, but...
The tank that's currently in existence, it has only a single wall. For lack of a better word, it's grandfathered in. It still has leak detection. The purpose of the double wall is if the, if the primary wall fails, it'll catch by the second wall. And there's an interstitial monitor in between the two walls. Single wall has a monitoring system outside, so it is not as safe for the environment for, if it spills, there will be a release. But we do have monitoring going 24/7.
Okay. So you're able, you have access to that information again for that single wall? Sorry, if you can turn the visual to Walter. Thank you, Walter. So yeah, I guess my concern is because it's not in compliance with these rules and regs. Yeah, maybe there's perhaps a way to kind of prevent any kind of leak. Is there any procedures in place where you can prevent?
So currently, because it's, it's not, these rules don't mandate that all single-wall be converted, that, again, it's following industry standards. So the industry allows that this tank to be utilized for, as Don pointed out, 30 years. We would have to uphold the industry standard.
Okay. Yeah, I think also the concern is Guam tends to be more corrosive. Our environment is corrosive, so maybe sooner than the, what manufacturers...
We can initiate discussions with the owner of the single-wall tank and we can, we can keep you updated, Senator.
Okay. I greatly appreciate that. So yeah, I think these are very important rules and regs and I'm full support of them. And, you know, thank you for all the hard work and if there's any thing that, you know, the legislature can do to assist with getting you more resources to make sure that they're properly, you know, implemented, please let us know. So thank you so much.
And we appreciate all the Senator's input and we hope nothing changes on this and we like the path you're following. We appreciate it. The team here has spent a lot of time. US EPA is very happy with the work that they're doing. And so I want to congratulate our UST team and all that helped make these rules and regulations. Thank you.
This is Masi, Walter. I'd like to open the floor. Sorry?
Just wanted to make sure, these two plus Michael Mallon and Vince Ferrer.
Yes, yeah, thank you to the staff, Don, Mivani, Vince. I know Vince, you're not showing right now, but I know you put a lot of work into this. And Michael, Michael Mallon, right? So I appreciate all your work. Okay, so I would like to open the floor to my colleagues, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I did want to ask, out of existing underground storage tanks that have been permitted by Guam EPA, do all of them have secondary containment now? I mean, of course, back, way back in the day, they didn't have that requirement, but I'm assuming just because it's been such a substantial amount of time from these, you know, what we'd assume the timeline of tanks being permitted by Guam PA. Do we have any outstanding ones in operation or, you know, that are still in place or pretty much everything that's being regulated right now and permitted by Guam EPA, does it all have a secondary tank requirement?
Yes, with the exception of that one facility.
Okay, and where is that facility? Sorry.
Sand Castle.
Sand Castle has, it just has a single containment?
Single-wall diesel fuel underground storage tank.
Oh, for diesel fuel. So this guy was built back in the late 80s almost, I believe, right? Late 1980s, if I'm recalling the timeline. Okay, and what, what is the lifespan of that? You just, I mean, it continues on that way until it's removed or no longer in operation or what's the requirement at this point for an extended?
There is no extended, from my understanding, by industry standards, the manufacturer recommends 30-year replacement.
That's coming up around that because...
Yeah, I believe so.
I'm trying to think, in 1990, the Sand Castle was already built already and operating, so are we about there? Is that about 30, 31 years now?
I need to check our records, but I believe there...
Well, just verify. I mean, if it was installed at the time of the original construction, I don't know. Yeah, you'd have to verify your records, but I think the facility is about 30 years old because I recall attending a function there in 1990 and it's 2021 now. So I, gosh, that is 30-plus years already.
Okay, we'll look into that.
All right, yeah, that would be good, just time-wise. I mean, unless it, unless it was installed many years later, but if it came with the, you know, construction of the facility. Other than that, Madam, Madam Chair, I don't have any other questions other than how often do, does Guam EPA do an inspections unless there's a leak or follow-up on their requirements? And how often do they have to come in for their renewals now for their permit to operate? You know, just to verify, is it, do you have any tests or anything is required to make sure that these tanks are still structurally sound or do we just wait till we hear there's a possible leak to, you know, make sure maintenance is being done or that it's still structurally sound to hold fuel? Things are substantial in size, certainly ones at the gas stations, you know, those are pretty sizable.
Yeah, the facilities are required to register their tanks every year, every January of the new year. We schedule our inspections on a month or on a quarterly basis, so we would go like... So we would go like 10 facilities for one month, another 10 for another month, and another 10 for another month, depending on the size of the facility and our workload also, because we also deal with hazardous above ground storage tanks and any complaints or emergency responses.
And how many, how many, how many underground storage tanks do you have that are permitted with Guam P A now? What's the inventory?
Around 282. 282.
And they range from what, what's, on average, the minimum size to the larger? Or maybe just tell us in terms of, you know, the amount of liquid fuel that, you know, that can be held in these tanks, what the size is, just to give us a general idea of.
I believe minimum 1,000 gallons to maximum underground 10,000. And the field constructed in itself is.
It includes the field construction tanks, like over at the fuel farm in PD. So they're like.
Yes.
Millions of gallons. And there's like 27 of them at the fuel farm in PD.
And those are all, those are primarily all above, above tank. You can have, you're talking about the big one, big ones that have above ground.
There are above ground, but for, under the underground storage tank, they're called field constructed tanks.
Okay.
So those are the 27 that the fuel farm has, yeah.
And how about in terms of regulating the military? You know, because most of our people are not aware, what is the, for, for underground storage tanks on base? Because we know certainly Anderson has a pretty sophisticated system that was constructed not too many years ago for their, you know, to fuel their planes, you know, before they bring the, you know, fuel truck onboard, and then they'd hook them up and they'd fuel them. But they have a more sophisticated system. And I'm just curious how, because I can, we have concerns about how, you know, of course, these issues would be affecting our community as it, you know, sits over the northern Guam waterlands. So can you just elaborate on that for just the interest of our, you know, our other senators and the listening public?
Senator, thank you for that question. We regulate the U S T as well as the A S Ts above ground tanks. The same as we do military as well as its ability. We follow all the same regulations.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to ask, how, how do you guys go about that? You know, on the basis as well? Because a lot of people aren't aware. They think that because it's on the military base, that, you know, there's no jurisdiction for Guam P A. And I think if it's behind the fence, that it's, you know, the military's unregulated. So that's the reason I'm asking.
No, that's, that's not, that's incorrect. We have full regulatory authority with the U S Ts and A S Ts, both inside and outside the fence.
And how, how is that, how are you guys coming along with addressing that? I mean, I know that they, they redid their, you know, their fuels above, you know, in terms, not above ground, but underground for, for being able to fuel their, their airplanes and things. I mean, how, how are you guys doing with that? It's not that old a system. But how, just again, just for edification of the public, how do you, how do you verify that there's no issues with regards to leaks on those type of tanks?
So the team follows the same, same procedure that we do for the commercial inventory. They get the, they have to report yearly or annually all the tanks that they have. They have to do the continuous monitoring that we have access to the records. And we do our unannounced or announced inspections just as it fits into the three year cycle. Let me pass it on to Don, who actually does inspections, so that he can better describe it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so when we do go out to Navy and Anderson, we, we go out either unannounced, or we have to make arrangements because some places we can't get into. But we do go out, we do do visual inspections of the fueling points, and we do look at the records.
You also look at any tests they have to test the integrity of the tanks as well? There is a period of time that you would follow up to make sure that they, they do those type of integrity tests on the, I mean, it could be above ground, underground, whatever the case may be, to make sure that, you know, the, the tanks still maintain their integrity and are not leaking.
Yes, that is part of the record review.
Okay. And I'm just asking these questions, not that I'm not unaware of them, but I think some people are of the impression, as I mentioned also, with regards to regulating these type of requirements on base. Some people are of the impression that because it's, you know, it's behind the fence, so to speak, that Guam P A does not have that type of authority to go in and address regulatory review of those types, because they're substantial in size. Certainly for Anderson, they're quite substantial in terms of the fuel capacity that they have to store up there. So I just think it's good to be able to provide, you know, that information to the public so that they're aware with regards. Because most people are never going to read these regulations. That's why I think in terms of just general awareness for us and the public that you elaborate on that. And that's why I asked those questions, so that we can provide that greater awareness out there. Thank you so much for your response.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator.
With that, Madam, Madam Chair, thank you. I have no, no further questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Right, thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Tydegui, if you have any questions at this time.
See, just Masi, I apologize for being late. However, I do recognize that PowerPoint presentation, it was given to us at one other time, if I'm not mistaken. And appreciate all the hard work that E P A is doing as well. I just had one question with regards to certain tanks that are used on a commercial area with generators. Do you still inspect those, you know, big generators for like condos or your companies? And you still inspect those kind of tanks that are underground?
Yes, we do.
And do you know how many, approximately how many tanks there are like that? That are, you know, just like for small buildings or condominiums that have generators?
Just talk about the size requirement.
We would have to look through our records, but I know we have it separated as far as the commercial gas stations and the hotels and condos.
I'm curious, yeah, I'm curious, because there are quite a few that are up and coming and some that really need some, you know, guidelines, not guidelines, but reassurance that these, these areas are also being inspected. I know that you have, like, I think if it's not Faco, oh, gosh, I can't remember the name of it, who does inspections? Flowco or Flowco, a company called Flowco that does some of these inspections and that go out to service particular tanks in that area. So I guess, I guess it's not an issue then with E P A.
Hi, Senator. Maybe I could better answer, try to answer that. So under, under our permit review process for new construction, we, the standby generators get reviewed by our air program, and that permit gets processed by the air program. If the tank that's associated with that standby generator fits the definition of an underground storage tank in our U S T program, we'll do the permit with the company and ensure that they meet the requirements of the U S T regulations. So the standby generators, we have actual dual process review. We have the air program and the U S T program. If, if their tanks that feed their standby generator, excuse me, feed the standby generator meet the definition of a U S T.
Ah, okay, because I'm, I'm finding out there's quite a bit of that, of those tanks. And I know you guys have a lot to do when it comes to inspecting particular tanks. I was just wondering what the number was, but.
We could get you that number, we could get you that number, Senator.
Well, as long as you guys have the ability to do that on a regular basis, or, you know, at least on a substantial amount of time to, to make sure these tanks that are created by private companies and are smaller, sometimes the small ones are go and detected, and it can cause just as much damage if there's any leaks or, you know, any issues coming with it. So and I know, I know some condominiums have these tanks, and it's important that it's, they're reviewed on a regular basis.
Part of the review process for Guam P A now, we actually have a permit team that has, that has been provided guidance on its standby generators and associated tanks that, that provide the fuel. They will send it to both programs. In fact, we actually do that electronically now so that we try to reduce some of the review time. But we do, our permit team is knowledgeable enough to say, okay, there's a standby generator, that needs to be sent to the air program. And even if the permit team were to miss that their, the tank that feeds, you know, whether it be a day tank or a U S T, you know, our, our air program team is right next door to our hazardous waste team. And so there's a lot of interaction for any new construction to ensure that these companies are meeting the regulations as, as required.
Okay, thanks so much, Walter, for a great job. And you hit it on the nose on trying to be more efficient by adding it electronically to make it a lot easier for your staff to monitor. So I'm glad you thought of that. That's a good idea. Okay, thank you. For the opportunity, and again to E P A, continue the, the great work, and we will continue to, you know, to provide you the resources you need to, to do your job. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Senator Tydegui, for those great questions. Senator Tonyada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't have any questions. I'd just like to thank the team at E P A for their hard work and diligence on 371 pages of the rules and regulations that they put forth to us to get approved. I think it just goes to show that, you know, their hard work and what they do and how, how they do it is, just goes to speak volumes of words for them up there that, you know, we depend on them a lot for the clean air and clean water and clean soil that we have here on our island. And we appreciate all that they do. And I look forward to this rules and regulations going on to our session floor so that we can pass it and then get this into their hands and start getting one, everyone in compliant for those that are not, and keeping those, those that are not in compliant in check, you know, and get them on board. But thank you, folks up at E P A for all that you guys do. I truly appreciate it. We all do.
Have a wonderful team here. They do work hard, and they deserve all the credit.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Walt. Thank you, team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
For getting, thank you, Senator Etta. Yeah, I think automation probably might be very an important investment in ensuring that we get the real time information or that Guam P A gets the real time information as, you know, as these underground storage tanks are monitored. Maybe that's a question I have for, for Walter. Is there any program that does that? Is that, is there anything, any program that's available to do something like that to make your workload easier and more efficient in this regard?
I believe there, there may be a possibility to be able to sync with our server. And there's, I'm not an I T guy, but we will definitely look into it. We are internally Guam P A is trying to go electronic. And I, and again, I don't know how or the verbiage to use, but we will look into trying to sync with their, to get live feeds from, from their 24/7 monitoring.
Yeah, I think that would be great. That would help at least monitor it more frequently and probably get through all of the 282 underground storage tanks, right? And within a year, you know, prior to their, you know, relicensing or repermit. Yeah, I mean, I think that's.
That may be a possibility. I'm not sure, but how difficult that would be. But we'll definitely look into it now that we're, we're going more electronic as well.
Yeah, let us know how we can help. All right, I think that concludes the testimonies. And so the committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 P M. Monday, July 19, 2021. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research, and Planning. It can be dropped at the, at the mailboxes at the Guam Congress Building or email to office@senatorparas.org. Being that there are no further testimonies or questions, the committee is now adjourned. The time is 2:54 P M. This is Masi, everybody, and have a great day. Take care.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.